You don't have it, I'm calling to be in order. Oh goodness.
Marian, I think the same thing when the phone rings and it says Kyla Welch, I'm like, oh, come on.
Yeah.
Yeah, no.
I know, just especially considering today, when I saw it pop up and I was like, oh, already? But it was an older one, so.
I always answer hello.
Yeah, exactly.
She ought to do that sometimes, say, hey, just kidding.
And did you get your email? Mine, the one with the red line.
Oh, did you send that?
No, just to you and. I just wanted to make sure you had this.
There he is.
Okay.
John.
So, just a reminder to come into the town hall and sign the signature file. There are several documents waiting for your signature. And here's our first update from the budget committee. Who will present the board and one of maybe several public, several hearings. Actually not a hearing, just an update. Is there a spokesman or does someone want to?
Yeah, Ted.
Thanks.
That was very good.
He, well, let me just say, let me just say this, Ted has done a phenomenal job. He really has been the driving force here, organized us, got us set up, made the contact. So, Mike and I, I mean, as much as we've made him who he is, he still has done this. Much of, much of it on his own. We've all been involved, but he's the guy that's really been running the ship, so.
All right. Well, thank you, Michael, for that.
I don't know how you wanted to start. We did, we did come up with some general observations. I don't know if people have seen it at all.
I've seen your observations.
Maybe, maybe the thing to do is to, maybe just to share that.
Sure.
But someone's going to have to give me permission to share.
Someone's going to have to give you permission to share it?
I don't know how to do that.
To do what?
Oh, I bet is.
Whoever generated, whoever generated.
It seems that I have it now, so.
There you go.
So can everybody see the word document I'm showing?
It's a little small.
Can you increase the scale?
Yeah, I'll give you a second.
Yeah, what she said.
Wish Ross would say that more.
How's that?
That's good.
Good.
I mean, good for me.
So as we were going through all of the reports, what we noticed is that apparently all departments are told to put in the 3% salary increase every time. And we kind of called that out a little bit because of the current status of everything, everybody, basically, there's a lot of people that are out of work, who are getting under their own financial difficulties due to the pandemic, laid off, reduced hours, not seeing raises themselves, and the seat is put in across the board. Now, the concern that we had was it may not send the right message that it's given every year. On observation number two is that departments tend to assume that the same things they got funded last year are going to be the same things that are funded this year. An example was hires for vehicles replaced every year, even on low use vehicles.
Ted, can I just ask a question that's Ian? The question is, is it within the regular budgets that you're talking about here? You're not talking about the capital budgets?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. And it's not that necessarily any of these things are individual problems, but they seem to be, everybody seems to do. So we just wanted to make, make sure it was put out there as an observation. Number three was kind of a big one for us is that between the different departments, there's a great deal of variety in terms of what is presented to the budget committee. Some are very detailed, while others are a lot sparser. And so one of the things that we would look for were for oncoming years is that every department create a summary page that talks about what is different for this year. Again, this is to make it easier for the budget committee to see what has changed. Some departments had a line item spreadsheet at the beginning. We would ask that all departments do the same thing, so it's easy for us to get a quick summary of what things look like. Ideally, you know, there are some departments that have revenues, but those revenues are not reflected in that, that summary. And so from a cursory view, all these departments, a lot of departments look like they're just exclusively a cost center, but many of them are generating significant revenues that offset that, that cost. For example, Parks and Rec has a, I think it's nearly a third of their budget in fact, in terms of revenue, but it's not reflected on their summary. And additionally, line item justifications really should be more than we really need this, or something that is, is simple like that. And again, this is intended to make the work for the budget committee a little simpler. Also, in talking to the various groups, to a large extent, how this stuff is handled on the back end seems to be a black, a black box to many of the departments. They don't really understand the details of how the money is handled on the backside. And specifically how that's balanced against allocation to keep taxes down. So maybe the revenues go into a fund that get used to offset actual expenses, but based on their view of it, they don't really see that. And that kind of goes hand in hand with number three above, where if there was revenues included, that would be a little more clear. Departments have also reported being frozen in the spring pretty much every year. So if that's the case, you know, what happens to the money that hasn't actually been spent? Is it really in their budget and they don't get to spend it? It goes back on, you know, back into the general fund? So, you know, trying to get out here is is, is their budget really lower than what is presented on paper? Another recommendation is that the town should go through each department by department and examine spending averages over the last five years and establish a new zero-based budget-based actual spending. This is kind of to get back at the issue where people are basically copying pasting their previous year's budget and moving forward. Ideally, and I don't know the right basically wording for this, departments, it would be nice if they had a a savings account, plant fund, whatever it is called in town budget man, where they can specifically save for expenses that they, that they know are coming forward. But in order to spend on it, they need some special permission. Let's see. Number nine, last year, we anticipated new revenue from Market Basket and other developments. Because the overall budget is up significantly this year over last, it's not clear on how that new money played into the budget. We're seeing $600,000 worth of new spending requests, but it's not clear where that additional money that we are expecting in revenue really went. And the last two, in talking to people, we covered, the bond specifically covered a lot of the replacement equipment that people were expecting. But yet, all the, the maintenance budgets, you know, are still the same as they have been near the past. One would have expected with new equipment that the amount that you would spend on maintenance might decrease some. And finally, on the general observations, you know, we would recommend to develop some standard performance metrics for each department. New miles of road, cave, number of tons of waste shipped out, things like that, that really tells us, paints a picture of how that particular department is, is performing relative to previous years. I know that's a real mouthful and.
Okay. Well, thank you, Ted. And maybe if we could go down through each one that we might be able to either explain or adopt, so.
Want to do that? You want me to do that?
Yeah, you want.
I will. Okay. So Ted, I had a few minutes today after I received your email to go down through your questions and try to come up with my initial responses for these. Now, I'm sure that there's more information that every department would like to throw in here that you have met with. So I'll just, I'll just start down, talking about the 3% salary increases. The 3% is a negotiated contract item for the town of Plymouth Fire and Police Department. And has been for a good number of years, and it has been applied to all the personnel across the board. So it has been a unit item. However, are you suggesting that non-union employees should receive a different percentage?
I'm, I think we're suggesting here that it should be evaluated on an annual basis, see if conditions.
You just, you just kind of, you know, you died out there.
I think we're proposed, I'm proposing here, excuse me, is that it be evaluated on an annual basis to see if it makes sense that everybody gets 3%.
Okay, understood. And then you talk about departments tend to assume that the same things could be funded for last year is the same as this year. And my initial response here, and the departments probably have something that they would like to explain as well, that the departments understand what they need to spend on all their equipment each year, up to and including cost of tiles and oil changes. We're unsure of what department you're speaking of initially, the low use vehicles, as mentioned in your email. When the down, when the town purchased additional equipment under the recent bonds, the cost of repairing the additional equipment needs to be considered as well. The reason that the funding did not increase is because we have the new equipment. We are running still some of the old equipment, but we have the new equipment. If we didn't get the new, those numbers would have gone up across the board. Does that make sense?
I don't know how much maintenance really gets done with a new vehicle.
Right, I agree.
You know?
You're not spending as much with the new equipment, but you still have the old equipment that needs to be maintained.
But is it going to cost?
Keep the old equipment?
I'm sorry?
You keep the old equipment?
Yes, we do. Some of it, not all of it, but some of it.
But you're also replacing equipment that was high maintenance in the past, and so now you're getting that replacement piece of equipment that's coming in with very little maintenance, at least it should be for two or three years.
And if we hadn't replaced the equipment or bought new equipment, these maintenance lines would be much higher than what they are right now.
So why do you keep the old ones if you're replacing them?
The new ones, the old ones, for certain purposes are, they're not being used as much, but potentially they could still be used, like in the police department. He doesn't, when he gets a new vehicle, it doesn't necessarily mean he takes that vehicle that he's replacing and just trades it in. Usually it gets passed down to another individual and the oldest, oldest piece of equipment would go out.
That's correct.
Still have maintenance there.
And if I may jump in.
The oldest one goes out. Go ahead, Steve.
So when you get a fleet vehicle, specifically a cruiser, it doesn't come with a three-year, 36,000-mile warranty like your normal cars do. They just don't, because they're not gonna, the way we drive a car and the way the normal person drives a car is world apart from each other. So we don't write off a lot, as soon as you drive it off a lot, any repair that's done to that vehicle still needs to be done. There are some, you know, there are some warranty things that they will do to a cruiser, but it's very limited as to what they will do. And then tires for the, for the cruisers, and I explained this to the budget committee and they know, you know, you, you don't want to skimp on tires on a cruiser, you know, because we're, we're, like I said before, we don't drive them like everybody else does, our foot's to the floor until we get to where we're going to our emergency and then our foot's to the floor with the brake as well. So we go through brakes and tires yearly.
Anne, if I may?
Yeah, sure.
So just in terms of the, the ambulance that we bought with the, with the, with the bond, that, you know, we have to plan obviously through June of 2022 for that in terms of maintenance. Granted, it won't take the 25,000 that the old ambulance took that we just traded, but, you know, we had to budget for tires for the old ambulance and we had to make a contingent for tires for the new ambulance, because we're going to be running it for the next 18 months. And those tires, as Chief Lefave said, they, they take a lot of abuse and we will, we will need tires by that point.
So your fleet is always increasing, not decreasing?
No, just replacing, right?
Replacement.
The ambulance was a replacement.
Yeah.
But what I'm hearing is the old one doesn't get rolled off. You still keep the old one.
The old one could be, if it's a police car, it could be moved to a different department for them to utilize so that they don't get a new piece of equipment.
For instance, today, the highway department took one of my older fleet vehicles from us. Because, you know, they, they're, they drive it around, you know, from point A to point B, and they're not driving to emergencies like we are.
Right.
But then to Ted's point, Steve, you should show a decrease in maintenance and someone else should show an increase?
Well, no, because the vehicle still say, you still have X amount of vehicles. It's just, you get new ones in and the oldest, oldest ones go. So yeah, I mean, you have, you have some, a couple of like three brand new ones coming in, but like Tom also said, don't forget this, we're looking at 2022 and by then you're gonna have to start paying for repairs.
And they come off the assembly line, or once they buy them at the police department, they don't have a three-year, 36,000-mile warranty like we would. Suddenly they're replacing tires sooner, they're, they're, whatever needs to be done, there's no warranty per se with these vehicles unless it's something along the lines of a recall or for the most part.
Because there, there is some warranty, and you shouldn't say there's no warranty, because there is a warranty on there. But it's just, it, it's limited to mostly like powertrain and engine and stuff like that, like some of the more serious things. But it's not like a full bumper to bumper like you would normally get.
There are some items like the stretcher that we have on the agenda tonight, you know, we will keep that old stretcher. It'll be worth having as a reserve as opposed to trading it in for next to nothing. Same will, same will be the case for the pickup that we have in the budget. That old pickup will probably go to the highway department, for instance, for a, for a yard truck, but it's not serviceable for emergency use.
To, I, I'm sorry, I don't mean to keep asking, but so then you'll actually see an increase in maintenance?
Potentially, he could see an increase in maintenance, yes. But it's cheaper than buying two new stretchers and getting rid of the old one at this time.
Yeah, like the one that we put in reserve, there, there won't be a service contract on that. It, it's too old to, but it would, it would work in an emergency situation, so we'll keep it as a reserve.
I'm gonna move on.
Yeah, I think we're, we're probably focusing on something that's, probably wouldn't save us a lot of money, but I think we ought to, yeah, move on.
Item three was the material presentation to the budget committee and the lack of consistency between departments. We will work much harder next year at getting consistency across the board on that. The accounting system seems to be a black box to the departments, how the revenue is balanced against the allocated, keeping taxes down, revenue should go into a fund that can only be used to offset the actual expenses. Municipal accounting does not allow you to do that. All of the money comes into the town and the department's budgets, all, it's a bottom line budget, it's bottom line for revenues and expenses. So all money goes into the town. Now you could say that Park and Rec collects 300,000, I'm not sure what the number is right now. And you can say, yes, those are their revenues. So when you look at the handout, the drafts, budgets that Kathy presents to everyone, you'll actually go down through, and I'm sorry you didn't have these earlier, but you could go down through and you can see what each department brought in. So we'll make sure that that is done. Town should be doing goal setting with departments. As we talked about, are you discussing something along the lines of a CIP program? Because we do have a CIP program, each department is considered within that program. And the present needs of the selectmen, they go to them, they talk to them, and they're added to the sheet. But most of the time over these past, I'd say, five years, we haven't had the ability to sit down and work on a CIP program because everything needed to be replaced now, right now. That's what these bonds were for. Now that the bonds are out of the way, we're hoping to work much harder on that CIP program.
Ted, is that what you meant? Or are you like strategic planning or something, or what?
So when we're talking about the goal setting, capital improvement is certainly a big piece of it, but there's also kind of just setting long-term goals and where those departments might, what the work they intend to carry forward. This would be a much more significant piece to the highway department where there's a lot of maintenance and what have you, but they, they seem to have a difficulty getting that, that work prioritized with the town. And it would also help members of the budget committee to be able to ask more critical questions of their budget if we know what the goals are and what the, you know, the town is trying to do with, with those budgets. It would just help us out, give us a clearer picture of what we're look, looking for and how with those goals, we could support the town in, in questions with, with the department heads.
You talk about each department reports that were frozen in the spring, so how much money did they really need? They needed the entire budget. And the reason that I say that, and I can say that quickly, is because when we freeze, or sorry, not we, when administration freezes the budgets in the spring, it is because we know at that point, either we are or are not going to meet our revenues. When your revenues are shortfallled by 500,000, how do you make that up? You make that up because now you're going to tell the departments, sorry, guys, you can't spend 500,000 of your budget. That's how municipal accounting holds you back and allows you to say, we need to freeze the budgets because we're not going to make it. Now, that additional projects were put on hold, they were put on the shelf either to the coming year. They would have to bump something that they had in there, or hopefully we can find some grants. We tried to do that very hard. There are some projects that were requested that we just have to say, okay, we're going to have to put them off for two years because we don't have the money in the coming year for it. So that's what happens with the money when the budgets are frozen. I, I do like the idea of looking back five years and I think, I believe that the police department actually did that this year. They went back three to five years and looked at what their expending were, what their revenues were, and tried to come up with a comparison. So that probably is why you saw their department do some shifting in some areas. As far as each department should have a designated plant fund, it could be spent from with, from without town administration budget manager, select board permission. I'm sorry, cannot be spent, sorry. The town has designated funds that they can utilize, they're called the capital reserve funds, but they're only specific to individual projects. We can't go and say, okay, we have money in the police department building fund, but we're going to use it to buy a cruiser. Capital reserves don't allow you to do that. By putting additional money in a capital outlay per se, 50,000, $100,000, that's going to increase your bottom line of your budget. So the planning piece is where we need to really work on with the capital improvements. I think that will take care of some of the concerns there. Last year, we anticipated new revenue from Market Basket and other developments. How is the money played into the budget? Yet we still have an approximate $600,000 need. The needs actually come from the departments themselves. The value of Market Basket as of 4/1/2020 was, so it affected your 2020 tax rate, was $7.8 million. That increased the entire value of our town by $7.8 million, which overall reduced the tax rate because they have to pay that portion of the taxes. So yes, it did come into play. As far as it adding more needs on to the departments, I can't really answer that, and maybe Steve or Tom, if you're still there. I'm not sure, it, the $600,000 needs that you're talking about, I believe is the capital reserves that the departments had requested?
No, it's, it's more the operation.
The bottom line.
Yeah.
I'm not sure that that had anything to do necessarily, Steve, with Market Basket, that's.
Um, I, again, I didn't have anything in capital reserve, so that, that all got taken out of my budget.
It wasn't the capital reserves, they're saying, Steve, it was the bottom line budget. So your budget went up by, I'm not sure the total amount of your department, but.
And there were probably, I don't know, between, you know, the, the salaries did go up, retirement went up, and I think we all know that, you know, their, retirement went up big time. Those are the things that we don't have control over whatsoever. And the other line items that I, I only went up on a few line items, and that was because of the bond and we got some new technology in dispatch. I have to pay more a month because in order to get the equipment to work, I need dedicated fiber optic lines for service for, for some, like for my, for a network for the communication center. So I did have some increases in those lines. And that's, you know, that's part of technology. If that explains it well enough for everybody.
So item 10 was the bond covered a lot of replacements, yet everyone's maintenance budget is still the same. I think that we had discussed in item number two above. Yes, everybody agree? Or was there something that I missed in that question, Ted?
Yeah, basically that was the question that we've already covered.
And the last question was develop standard performance metrics for each department. And when I first read this, I considered, again, the answer of the town is not a traditional business. However, after hearing. However, after hearing your explanation, which was miles, road paved, tonnage of waste shipped out, general performance, I think that we may be able to come up with something here. I just need to stand back and, and really consider the entire project. Okay, that's.
All right.
Anything in the budget that they wanted to change yet?
I don't know. Shall we ask? So, go ahead.
I'm sorry, was there any department itself, as you went through, that you would make recommended changes for as of yet?
We, we, we did go through each, we did have notes on each department that we wanted to cover specifically.
Okay. So the next meeting, do we want a meeting on Christmas week, or is it the 28th?
The 28th is the next meeting.
So the 28th, Ted, would you be ready to come in with those changes? Would you in the committee?
I think so. We only have one or so departments yet to talk to specifically.
Okay. And if we could get that, the, that's Christmas Day. Earlier on in the day so that we could actually send it out to the departments as well as the selectmen, so they can kind of go through a quick review of what it is that you would recommend as a board or commission, okay?
We have it by Wednesday because we have, what, Wednesday?
We're meeting with our last department this Wednesday.
Oh, this week. So early next week possibly, we could have that then?
I, I would anticipate that.
Thank you. Again, thank you guys for, it's not an easy task. We do understand that.
And I think we understand that everything that we suggest isn't going to necessarily be accepted.
Yeah, we didn't hear that, Ted, but.
We keep losing you. Speak up, Ted.
I'm speaking loudly. It's just that my audio on my laptop is finny.
But you smiled when you said that, so it must be good.
We appreciate you guys. Thank you.
Yep, thank you very much.
I, I'd just like to say that I think this is a great starting point. And it gives us a framework to work within, and you guys have put a lot of effort into this.
Right.
I think one of the things that we saw in talking to everybody was that there really is a need for more communication with department heads, I think. I think some department heads feel like maybe they, they don't get heard, and maybe that's on them. But just more of an update on a regular basis to keep the hand on the pulse. The other thing that we see some crossover in what one department may do for another department, but that, you know, it costs them money to help out somebody else. They get billed for it. The person, for instance, is the recycling center and the plowing. Joe goes up there and he pushes the snow around for them, but it comes out of his budget, doesn't come out of Jesse's budget. And I believe they have a truck with a plow up there where they could do a lot of that stuff themselves. So I mean, some of that stuff is going on, which, you know, maybe it's, you know, we help each other out and that sort of thing, but we have to take that in consideration, I think.
Hey.
All right. Well, thank you very much, and we'll see you later this month.
Okay, thanks a lot.
Thanks, y'all.
So the next item, Josie Girona Ewing, Bob Clay and supervisor of the checklist regarding CARES Act reimbursement. And we kind of left it up in the air for, we did receive a clarification letter from Bob Clay regarding the hours involved.
And also, did you have the supplemental letter from Josie from last, you did, yeah.
Right. So Josie, do you want to say anything more on that?
I think everything I've had to say I've addressed in my letters to the select board. I think the messaging from the Secretary of State's office has been very clear about how the money, they hope the money is used. You know, the election officials and I, we, all of us worked incredibly hard and we were on the front lines and we, the work we did, we did it so we could ensure safe and fair elections in our community. And, you know, I, I think we're just hoping that the board recognizes that.
The only comment I have to make is that this is ongoing because we have another meeting on Thursday with the Secretary of State's office and the Attorney General's office, again.
Yeah.
Because they're not done. So it's still an ongoing process.
Well, these are follow-up discussions with the Secretary of State on the results of the voting that we did.
Yes, and on where we go forward with election and election law and recommendations for the, for the House of Representatives and the Senate. All, all issues dealing with elections because of what we went through. It's being looked at, you know, with a magnifying glass to see what can be done to improve or, or maintain or whatever we're going to do in the future. I know we have town meetings coming up, and we're going to have to figure out what we're going to do for town meetings. So that's still going to be meeting with them to figure out how we're going to be able to handle a town meeting if Corona is still on. So I mean, it's an ongoing process. We're not done yet.
Okay. So I guess I'll, even though we don't have the money to collect, we still have to submit, or actually, we don't have to submit anything.
No, the grant was already submitted. We, as of today, we do not have the money yet.
That's fine. We're more concerned about the approval than, than we know it's going to come, and when it gets there, it gets there.
Want me to go through or?
Sure.
So at the last meeting, I had requested that the board allow me to contact several towns. First of all, I'll, I'll be another one to say, you guys did a great job. We're not saying that. So I did contact several towns and I did provide the board with a spreadsheet that you should have in front of you. There were two towns out of the approximately 20 towns that responded. Barnstead, I'm sorry, Francis Town issued, they got a $3,585 grant and they issued $96 to their election workers. The town of Bo issued a $75 hazard pay to their election workers and they received 17,851. The rest of the towns did not issue any funds to their election workers above and beyond what their stipends were or their salaried pay. Josie had requested that I contact Chesterfield. I did call their office twice and no response, so.
It wasn't Chesterfield, Anne, it was Chichester. And what they did there, I spoke to the town administrator. They gave their election officials, such as the town clerk, a $2,500 stipend for hazard pay. And on top of that, an additional $500 for the work she did within the office for absentee ballots. And they also gave all of their other election officials hazard pay as well. And unfortunately, some of the talks I've had with the Bo town clerk, for example, there's going to be more conversations, I think, between election officials and selectmen because a lot of, I think this money is being treated as, grant money is being treated as, it, it has no tax impact. What, the, I think the Secretary of State's office has been clear of how they think the funds should be used. And I think there's flexibility with that, of course, and the Secretary of State's office has been clear about that as well. But there are communities that are giving their election officials the stipends for the work that was done. $96 for the work, for example, for the work we did, that doesn't seem fair, but I don't know if Bob has anything.
Yeah, I'll, I'll chime in. I'll absolutely chime in. You're comparing Francis Town, which is up an east overshoe that has a very small population versus a college town that we have to bust our tail in order to register new students and put through the number of people that we put through. And that's not the same. And unless you're comparing to another college town, it's not realistic.
So Bob, Bob, I did compare with Keene. They got a $40,951 grant. There was no money returned to their election officials.
It's garbage. I'm sorry, that is absolute garbage. If you want election officials to work in this town, I mean, this is ridiculous.
And you have to look at, and every, you know, not just Anne, excuse me, you have to look at what those election officials are being paid currently. You know, is that rolled into their current salary to do extra? You know, I understand we're elected officials, but this year, a lot was taken out. We, we sacrificed a lot of time and dedication for the elections. And I'm not so sure that a area like Keene, with a big population like Keene has, if they had as many drives that we put on, or if they provide curbside service to their residents or delivery service even. I think that's something you have to recognize as well.
And if I could just go through and complete my, my review.
Keene is also a city, and they have wards and they have many more voting officials than we do that are, you know, it's, you're not comparing apples to apples. Go ahead.
Okay. The election officials, as requested, I would just like to go down through those. The postage was for $815, which Josie had calculated. The election supplies was $435.30. However, to date, we have spent $4,045.89, according to the budget. The additional poll workers, $2,300 of that, $1,125 has been spent to date per the budget. The moderator has asked for $500 of that, $400 has been, I'm sorry, $400, yes, has been paid to him to date and an additional 400, right, for two elections. And then an additional $400 has been paid to the assistant moderator that we hadn't budgeted for, but that's, it's, it's okay. The supervisors of the checklist have each asked for $3,000, having been paid $1,200 each to date, 3,600 of their budget. The deputy town clerk, according to the town clerk, she would like to reimburse her $1,000, which is equivalent to 47 hours of extra time. And the town clerk herself would be the remaining 3,000, which is equivalent to about 120 hours of extra time. So if we go through and we finish the expenses to date for the 20 through 21 budget, we come up with $11,469.84 that have been expended to date. This grant is $11,535. There is a difference balance of the grant of $65.61. The board has the authority to pay these stipends if they want to or to allocate this information. My job was to get the information for the board.
And I, when, when going through my numbers, I was not including the primary or, excuse me, the other elections. I was only taking the difference because the state cares about.
There was only two elections this year.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm not sure where you're getting the $4,000 from. So I wasn't looking at the anticipated expenses. I was looking at the additional work and additional expenses.
Those were the actual expenses, Josie, for those two elections?
Yes, but some of those expenses were anticipated, like the contract with LHS. That's something that we pay, we pay them roughly $1,000 every two years so they can do maintenance on our machines. Those are expenses that are not covered under the grant because that is anticipated.
What was in the budget for the two elections that should have been spent prior to COVID? That's the question. What was budgeted?
Started in March, so we would actually have, I only did the elections from July 1, 2020 forward. I did not go back to any of the March or January of last year.
That's not, that's not the question that I'm asking. What I'm asking is what was budgeted for those two elections? Versus what was spent? $6,000 was budgeted and you spent 12, correct?
No, we didn't spend 12.
Well, she just said that you spent 11,000 some odd dollars. I don't have the spreadsheets in front of me, so I mean, I can't.
What, what, the 11,469 was the election expense, postage, the ballot clerks, the supervisors, the town clerk estimating approximately 71 hours of extra time, according to your letter, Bob.
Right.
FICA, Medicare, the moderators, other employees who worked priceless, and then the deputy town clerk, she hadn't worked any overtime. So that was not included. So 11,469.84 was the estimated cost for those two elections to date to the town.
What did the town actually spend for those two elections? That's what you had started to say.
That's what we spent.
So what was budgeted for those two elections?
That's what we spent. I would have to look at the budgets.
I'm not, that, then, then if we budgeted $8,000 and we spent 11,469, there's still a big difference versus what you're asking and what you're saying. Is that a correct statement?
You have to look at the entire budget. The supervisors, we've budgeted 4,500. We've spent 39 to date. The inspectors of ballots, we've spent, we budgeted 1,800, we spent 784. Let's see, longevity, election expense, we budgeted 6,000, we've spent 41.
There you go. So that's the point that I'm getting at, is that if you're, you're not comparing apples to apples. You're pulling part of the numbers and not all of the numbers.
No, I pulled all the numbers, Bob.
But what I'm saying is if there was money budgeted, this is supposed to be for above and beyond what was budgeted.
Yeah.
And you're trying to say that you've spent.
Then we should not include the, the calculation for postage or election expenses.
But that wasn't.
That was above and beyond because we would not have been doing that if it wasn't for COVID.
And that was the whole purpose of this grant, Anne. They, the grant was, how they reached the original offer is they observed clerks, select clerks were part of a study, which I explained to one of my letters. And they derived based on the amount of work that was put in, in entering the information, compiling absentee ballots. They derived with, to a number.
Through an accounting.
Per absentee, yes.
Through an accounting firm who did a study on it in order to come up with the numbers.
Right, yep. Josie, this is kind of like changing the subject a little bit, but are, are you aware of other towns that Anne had not researched that, you know, were doing something similar to what you'd like to do?
Uh, Hookset, New Hampshire, Chichester. I did give Anne that information, and the town administrator said, yeah, they said that they would be happy to talk as well. There are other communities, I'm sure, that are going well, you know, that are providing stipends to their election officials. I think we just have to make sure we're comparing with the right communities. Yeah, you know, city, cities are treated very differently from municipalities, small towns.
What towns would be best to use? What towns are comparable to us, in your opinion?
There really aren't many because we have 5,000 students on campus and 5,000 residents in the town, and nobody else meets that criteria in the whole damn state. You know, Dartmouth has, Hanover has a much larger population.
Yeah.
But it's not comparable to the, to the mismatch that it is in Plymouth, nor any of the other college communities.
So we shouldn't be doing any comparisons?
Well, I'm not saying you shouldn't be doing any comparisons, but I'm saying is that whatever you're looking at, you're not comparing apples to apples just because, because we, we stick out in the state all the time as the oddball because of the number of students we have versus the number of residents in the town of Plymouth.
Yeah, you know, it's contact, I don't know what the population of some of these communities are, but if you're contacting a community that has a very small population of maybe 1,000 people, yeah, they're probably not going to give their election officials much credit or, you know, as much of a stipend because most of those people, maybe they didn't vote absentee. The, the circumstances are just different, what I'm, is what I'm trying to say, you know?
And the other crazy piece is, is that even if you try to find a town close to ours, then you have to figure out how many were absentee versus how many were in person. Because that's not the same throughout the state. So it's, you know, I, I, I'm, I'm done arguing, I'm just. So it's, uh, you know, I, I, I'm, I'm done arguing. I'm just telling you the stuff that I feel. And what you do is what you do, but I can tell you, you have some very unhappy election officials that busted their tails and you might have some hard time replacing people.
So this is our second meeting on this at least and you know, I'm, I think we probably have as much as what we're going to get as far as an explanation of the request for the grant and, and how it should be dispersed as, as requested. And, you know, I guess opening up the board, can the board provide any questions or direction? At this point? Is there, I mean, is there a need for further clarification? Is that, is that what people are expecting or the board? The silence is deafening.
Sensitive subject.
It is. How do you quant, you know, there's no doubt, I don't think anybody here would disagree that you guys did a phenomenal job. It's just, how do you quantify that? That's what I struggle with.
I, I think just recognizing the amount of work that we did is enough to quantify, you know, for three months, our work schedules changed drastically. Not only did the supervisors and the moderator step up and do more, but I can speak for myself. I was working well beyond a 40-hour work week. I like to say up to 20 hours. I tried to be, I'm not trying to exaggerate. Most weeks I was working from home on weekends and working well into the night. And I think the board can recognize that because I was here oftentimes late at night when board members were here. So I think that's, I'm not make, I'm not trying to make up these scenarios or anything. It's just the reality is that clerks across the state put a lot of effort along with the other election officials to make this year possible. And I think that's how I quantify it. You know, I looked at, I'm a salaried employee, yes. But I saw this as a second job on top of the additional tasks that we typically take up. This was a very, very different year and Bob has, what, over 30 years of experience working in election, with elections? And he's even said himself that it's been a very challenging election year. And the Secretary of State's office also recognizes that. That was in their first letter or email that they wrote. So that's at least how I quantify it.
I'll admit that when, when I look at this, the, the piece in all of this that gives me the most pause is actually the town clerk. And this is, this is not an attack on you, Josie, echoing what everybody else has said. You did a fantastic job with this election. But you do have a salaried position that's elected by the town, that has a rate that's been set by the town. And, and so that is a piece that in this does give me some pause. It's that you, you know what your, you know what your job is, your job responsibilities include the election and includes many of these things. Certainly you went above and beyond probably on some of this, but I kind of think of that as like you, you doing a great job as a town clerk and not necessarily a, a, I, I don't assume that you entered into doing those things assuming you were going to get, you know, some financial bonus as a result.
Yeah.
When I think about the supervisors of the checklist, moderator, the assistant moderator, those folks, those positions are, are very, very low paid and are, are as close to a voluntary position as you can get based on the amount of stipend they typically get. And so when I think about those positions and saying, wow, you signed up for something that was, that was much bigger than what it would normally be in a year. I, I look at those and think, okay, I, I can see it. With you, it makes me a little bit more uncomfortable, but you know, I, I don't, I don't know what else to say about, about that necessarily.
You know, I suppose it's, and I had a feeling that this would be part of the discussion because I am salaried, but, um, the grant itself was designed with the help of town clerks. They weren't looking at all election officials. They were looking at town clerks and the work they put into in entering absentee ballot information.
Do you think that was, do you think that was with full-time salaried town clerks in mind?
Yes.
Smaller municipalities that have town clerks that are either hourly or, or are part-time or, or only are getting a small stipend? Like, you know, there's lots of town clerks in the state that get just, you know, some portion of the fee on, on vehicle, you know, registrations, that kind of thing.
And Bud Fish, this is verbatim, I'm quoting his email. Let's see. Staff who usually perform other tasks may have been taken off their regular work to send out and process absentee ballots. It also recognizes, it, meaning the CARES Act also recognizes that some of the work may have been done by staff whose normal compensation is salary or stipend. One goal of the program was to provide the local governing body with flexibility to appropriately increase staff or increase compensation for those working significant extra hours. So yes, the Secretary of State's office is considering town clerks who are salaried to be part of this because of the amount of overtime, even though I'm salaried, yes, I don't earn overtime. The amount of extra significant hours that worked were, was extraordinary. And even though my deputy didn't work overtime, Bethany put in a lot of work. I give her a lot of credit because it was very difficult with the doors being locked, having to constantly run outside to provide curbside service to people. Our phones, sometimes having 60 voicemails a day regarding message or elections. It, it was not an easy, it was not an easy election year by any means. And she did a lot of work. So I at least hope that the board will recognize her work, if not mine.
Okay, we only have a couple more minutes and then we have to start our meeting.
Can I say something?
Briefly.
I, I, I think we have a conundrum here. And we, we have outstanding moderator and town clerk and exemplary team that they work with. And I, and I think that we really need to give this more consideration before we make a decision.
Thanks, Neil. I would tend to agree, but I think we just better table this until our next meeting, unfortunately.
Well, we don't have the money yet, so we're not actually delaying the dispersment in any way.
True. Yep. Yes. All right.
Can I say one more thing, Bob? Or Phil, sorry. I've been confusing your names a lot lately. Zach, you said something that I wanted to reply to. I actually didn't think that we were going to get any money. I, I didn't think the Secretary of State's office or the CARES Act grant originally was going to, that, that funding would be extended to election officials at all. And it's funny because Bob did think that and I was actually very paranoid. I was scared to tell him, anxious to tell him after Election Day, Bob, I, I don't think that's what the use of the funding is going to be for. And I had a very good conversation with Bud Fitch, who's the, who works at the Secretary of State's office and the accounting firm. And they were very kind to send this email to elaborate on the fact that they did want to do it. And while, no, the board does not have to give election officials this money. It, we're not coming from a place of greed. I think we're looking at our roles in term, in terms of jobs. We're not, yes, we're elected, but we work very hard in this community in these positions. And yeah, I, I just, I don't want the board to think that we're asking for this money out of greed. That's definitely not the place where it's coming from.
Thanks, Josie. I think we all agree that we do appreciate your good work, the good, the good work of the election officials and especially Bob Clay. But it is now six o'clock and.